Good evening and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 6:30 PM Tuesday, May 17, 2011. At this time, I would invite you to join us for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And also, as a reminder during this time, today we are observing Police Officer Memorial Day in Henry County, and this is a time that we have set aside to recognize, to remember, and honor the men of the Henry County Police Department and Sheriff's Department that have lost their lives in the line of duty. So we ask that you also use this time to say a prayer for the families of these gentlemen. Mr. Holder?
Heavenly Father, we come this evening asking your continued blessings on each of us as we go about doing the county business, and ask that your hand be on our shoulders and open our minds that we might be better examples of what you would wish. We also ask that you open our minds and help us to realize just how many blessings you have bestowed upon us in recent days with the storms and how they have been guided away from our county. Be with the people in the Mississippi Valley, in southern Mississippi, in Louisiana, in the floods that will probably occur within the next few hours. Be with us as, again, as we go about the business of this county. Be with the families of the police that have lost their lives in line of duty. Be with our military when they are abroad. Be with the families here at home, so that we can get a better understanding of what life really is. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would like to officially call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. I would like to make the following announcement. The following item was advertised for this meeting but has been tabled by staff and will not be heard. Adoption of the official Henry County zoning map, HC-0ZM-11-01. A resolution by Henry County, Georgia, to certify and adopt the official zoning map of Henry County, Georgia, for the purpose of correcting drafting or other errors and omissions and reconciling official zoning records that are in conflict with the map in accordance with Section 1.07.0 of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. If you are here in regards to this item which has been tabled, it will be re-advertised and heard at a future meeting. Before we get into the remainder of our agenda, I also would like to take this opportunity to recognize two young men who are visiting with us today, and I'd like to ask you to stand as I call your name. We have Andrew Johnson and Ross Hammond, and they are here with Troop 163 of Mount Bethel Methodist in Ola, and they are here as part of their requirement for one of their badges. And we want to welcome you to the meeting and thank you for being here with us tonight. Can we give them a hand? Moving on to planning and zoning services, the first item is a resolution requesting approval of the LCI supplemental study contract and supporting documents for the I-75 Western Parallel Connector to implement the Hudson Bridge-Jonesboro Road Connector Activity Center, LCI Study. Our presenter is Sherri Hopson Matthews, Planning and Zoning Director, Exhibit Number Nine. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Board members. Ms. Sherman Mathis has indicated the request before you is to enter into a supplemental contractual agreement with the Atlanta Regional Commission and Henry County. Henry County was contacted in February of this year and notified that we had been awarded the LCI supplemental study to further study our Jonesboro Road-Hudson Bridge Connector Activity Center future parallel connector. We're really excited about this because what this supplemental study will do is to really get down to the engineering aspect of a true road alignment for this parkway. It does require a 50% match. We were awarded $50,000, so we will have to match it with $50,000. Because this project was listed as a SPOS III project, the funding is available out of SPOS III. Should you have any further questions? I'll be glad to answer.
And Sherri, I know this item came to us earlier this year, and that was to authorize the application for the grant funding.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so this is the fact that we have been awarded that grant, and now we just need to sign the contract.
Yes, ma'am, and then we will hopefully in the next two to three weeks have the RFP prepared, and then we'll go out for proposals. So that will come back to you all to accept the bidder for that.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, Mr. Auletta, this lies in your district, and there's a resolution before us, and I will entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Auletta, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a public hearing. Lori Widerstein of McDonough, Georgia, requests a modification, MC-11-04, to a zoning condition. The property is located at 917 Jonesboro Road in Land Lot 127 of the 7th District. The request is to modify a zoning condition regarding vehicular access. The property is located within Commission District 3, and that's Exhibit Number 10.
Good evening again, Board. Ms. Sherman Mathis has indicated the request before you this evening is a request to modify a zoning condition for a parcel of land which is shown on the overhead that was rezoned by the Board in August of 2009. At the time that the property was rezoned, it was rezoned from RA to C2 with nonspecific conditions. The applicant is seeking to remove zoning condition number two. Zoning condition number two simply stated that there shall be no access to the property from Heritage Way. What I've put on the overhead is a conceptual site plan that was prepared by the applicant in regards to the request. And if you'll notice, there's an existing one-story brick home on the property. It is the intent of the applicant for that one-story, I'm sorry, two-story brick home on the property. It is the intent that that single, that residential home will remain on the property, but the applicant is seeking to utilize Heritage Way as one of the access points to the property. As you all are aware, this was a modification to zoning conditions, so staff made no recommendation. Should you have any questions? I'll be glad to answer.
Does any board member have a question or comment for Sherri? If not, at this time, I'd like to ask the applicant or the applicant's representative if you would please come forward.
And Madam Chair, while the applicant's representative is coming forward, I just wanted to provide to you all a letter that's authorizing Mr. Jerry Davis to act on behalf of the applicant's request.
Good evening, Mr. Davis. You have 15 minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Board. My name is Jerry Davis. I live in, I'm a, I live here in McDonough. What we've done is we're trying to keep the property the way it is without making any improvements as far as buildings. The building that's there has been abandoned for approximately six years. We have a tenant, Dr. Madae, who would like to use the residence, remodel the residence, and use it as a doctor's office. What I'm showing now is we actually have put the driveway here on Heritage Way. We actually, at the recommendation of Mr. Stamey, we actually had a town hall meeting about this about a month ago, and the concern, there were some concerns, mostly about the pond. We then tried to be good neighbors. Instead of coming in on Heritage Way, we tried to go back up to Jonesboro Road where the existing driveway is and use that. We've hit more snags than you can possibly even count as far as getting the driveway located up there. We've just found out last Thursday that it's considered a floodplain. So we'd have to do flood mitigation, which would be extremely expensive to get flood mitigation done, and would not allow us to open the doctor's office anytime in the near future. It's just been one constant headache after another. We've made some improvements to the building and to the pond already. We've got a letter from, from the environmentalists and from the geotechnical people telling us today, we got the letter a couple hours ago, that the pond is nothing but a dried-up field. It's not, there's no wetlands, there's no water, there's no inlets, there's no outlets. It's just a dried-up field is all it is. There was a water line coming into the pond, it was actually a pipe that fed the pond. The pipe, apparently over the last couple of years when they put in the sanitary sewer easements, when we think it happened, the pipe was actually removed from under the road. So there is no pipe any longer to fill the pond. Really, there's just nothing we can do with it. And there's nothing we can do with putting a driveway in on the front now because of the floodplain. So our only access to the property is basically the Heritage Way access. I'll be happy to provide the Board with the letters from the, from the geotechnical people and from the environmentalists doing the study on the pond. And Henry County stormwater has, again, said it's a floodplain. So really, it becomes pretty much useless piece of property. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this point. It's really, hopefully, pretty simple. I hope it is. It's been kind of a nightmare, as Commissioner Stamey and Commissioner Bowman and some of the other commissioners can attest to. I've been working on this diligently for about a month and a half now, trying to get some sort of resolution to try and get a driveway into the property, and just, it's been, it's been pretty tough. But I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does any board member have a question or comment for Mr. Davis? If not, I'm going to reserve the remainder of your time, and I'm going to ask at this time for public comment on this request. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition of the applicant's We do have one. If you would, Mr. Davis, if you could have a seat?
Sure.
And if you would please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and you have, we have 15 minutes allocated.
Okay. My name's Shirley Parks. I live at 30 Heritage Way, and basically, I'm representing most of the homeowners in my subdivision. And what we are trying to do is make sure that as long as it's a doctor's office there, we have no problem with the access road. We have indicated that in the town hall meeting. We have also indicated that if it could possibly have a resolution to be rezoned back to O-N-I, then at that time, no one would have a problem because it's going to be a doctor's office. And from what I understand with the floodplains, there's no way that they can have access off of Jonesboro Road at this moment. Now, he just made a comment that there's no wetlands. Does that mean that they could at some time come back and put access, you know, ingress and egress for Jonesboro Road? That's a question I wasn't sure of. We wanted to make sure that it was going to stay the same as it was stated in the town hall meeting, a 24-foot wide driveway with 15 parking places. And they had indicated it was going to be a minimum 80 feet from, basically where my property. And we had discussed possibly even increasing that to 120 feet to alleviate, make sure that there was enough buffer in between. The main thing that we're looking for now is if we can have it O-N-I instead of the C2, then at that time, we would have no problem at all. Everybody's in agreement. I'd say there's probably 20 or 30 of my homeowners here that are in agreement with that. If, if that's okay, everybody's in agreement with the drive. That's the main thing that we're after, is just making sure that it doesn't convert back to the C2 after the doctor, or if the doctor does move. If she doesn't move, you know, we have no problem. But we had discussed that, and that was the only, only drawback that we possibly have. So, does anybody else want to speak?
If you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Stender. I live at 114 Heritage Circle. First of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner Stamey for his town hall meetings. I thought they were very informative, very much so. He listened to our concerns, he listened to the developer. We got a lot of ideas. We didn't have a whole lot of complaints. What I find is if you look at your plat map, the plat map describes that piece of land in the front that we're, as a drainage pond. Contrary to popular belief, and I'll invite any one of you to come down here and look, you can see the piece of pipe that went under the road out to the drainage pond. So at one time, there was drainage into that pond. Somebody diverted it, and it was by design. I don't believe the county did it, but somebody diverted it for ultimate gain. Having said that, we all know Mother Nature is not building any more land. There's only so much to go around. Every empty piece of property in this county represents a deficit to tax collection. So we're supportive, I am, in doing what's best. Now, having built a doctor's office in the back of that with C2 up in front, don't make a whole lot of sense. We've got a professional building that could be abutted to a sonic. My suggestion is consider changing that whole plat to O-N-I. I don't think there would be any objections, even if the pond was filled in. I think it would be in the best interest of everyone, the residents and the county, if the property was developed in such a way where it would bring a tax base to the county as well as ensure that we're not going to have any transient people going through the neighborhood up there. That's our biggest concern. That's about it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We still have 10 minutes left on, for anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant's request? Yes, if you could, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and you also have 15 minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Carrie Madae. I am the internal medicine physician wishing, well, I am the tenant of that location for five years.
Please state your address for the record.
Sorry. Carrie Madae.
And your address.
2129 Dundee Drive, Smyrna, Georgia, 30080.
Thank you.
Yes. Good evening. I am the internal medicine physician, the tenant of that location that we're talking about. I do have a lease for five years, but my intent is to stay there long-term, much, much longer than five years. I've been in practice for 10 years in the southern part of Atlanta, and I have a very big and broad patient base, and I'm very well-established. My patients don't want to move either, don't want me to move again either. So I do want that, that setting to be very serene, peaceful, and quiet. And I do want the location to pretty much remain as is except for extending into the parking area. So I just want to alleviate anyone's, anyone's concerns about changing that property. You know, as far as, I don't have any control over what happens with the rest of the property in front of me, but my concern, or my suggestion to my landlord was to keep the, the whole area as is, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant's request? If not, I'd like to ask the applicant if he would come back forward at this time. We still had 11 minutes if you'd like to add some additional comments.
Madam Chairman, as far as the wetlands go and the drainage pond, I do have letters, if you all would like to see them, from Pace Geotechnical and from the environmentalists stating that there is no wetlands, that there is anything. I've got those today, and I'm happy to, I'm happy to present, to give those to you if you'd like.
Give those to our staff. Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I've tried to be a good neighbor, as good as I could possibly be. I went to the town hall meeting and, about the driveway, and I understand these people's concerns. I think they do have genuine concerns about the pond and what was going on over there. I don't think anybody here wants the pond to remain the way it currently is or has been. I think they would all tell you, I hope they would all tell you, that it looks much, much better than, than it did. Once I heard their concerns, and after talking to Commissioner Stamey, I jumped on it as quickly as I possibly could and got as much of it cleaned up as I could. I am also, trying to be a good neighbor, went this morning and filled out a rezoning application for the property to have it downgraded from C2 to O-N-I. I have that in hand. According to Mr. Stamey and Commissioner Bowman, I believe there is a way to do this within about 15 days, as long as it's a downgrade, they can expedite the rezoning. But I have no problem at all changing it from C2 to, of the whole property to O-N-I. I have no issues with it. I want to be a good neighbor. The landowners want to be a good neighbor. We all want to, we all want to get along. We all want to see her come in and, and have a good, successful business. We all want to get along with the neighbors behind us. We think that we've bent over backwards to try our very best to help them, and we're willing to give up our C2 in favor of O-N-I. That's really, that's really it. I don't know what else I can tell you. I've done everything I can possibly do, believe me. I've worked countless, countless hours trying to, trying to get these driveways in, and I really don't know what else I can do.
So you said your application has already been filed to rezon.
It has been filed. We did the pre-application this morning. I do have a letter that's notarized and ready to go to you stating that I will get it done from C2 to O-N-I, and I've got copies for everyone.
Well, if that's the case, then should we not be looking at a motion to indefinitely table this item and allow him to go back through the process?
We still have to, we still have to move forward on the modification. And then he's going to file his application for rezoning. He's trying to get a curb cut that's a condition that's attached to the property that we have to modify. He's denied, as of right now, he's denied a curb cut. The modification would give him the curb cut, and then he would file his application for.
Madam Chair, I'd like to say one more thing. Dr. Madae, when she came to us and wanted to lease the property, she was under a very strict time constraint to get her practice open and running again. We agreed to meet her time constraints and had no clue that we would ever run into the delays that we've had. Commissioner Stamey has worked with me diligently to try and resolve this, along with the homeowners, to try and do everything we could to please them, please our tenant, and just get everybody happy. I think we've done way more than any other developer probably would do, so I really would request that we, we try and get this approved as quickly as possible. I do have copies. I met with, I met with them this morning. I have everything filled out, and I'll have this turned in no later than Friday of this week, and have everything ready, and it'll be, I guess it can be done in 15 days, as long as we're doing a downgrade in zoning.
Ms. County Attorney, can we, can we approve a modification with conditions of rezoning attached to those?
I don't believe we can. We've never done that. I don't think that will be appropriate, Madam Chairman. And on the 15 days, we have to advertise for at least 15 days. There are procedural steps that have to be taken in conjunction with the required hearings under our ordinance, so it may be longer than 15 days before the rezoning will take place. But to go back to your question, Madam Chairman, I think you will have the option of tabling it, if that's what you all want to do, to ensure that the, the rezoning application was actually filed, if you want to, if that's an important part of your decision process tonight. Or you can act on the request tonight, and with the hopes that the rezoning will follow.
But you cannot attach that as a condition?
That he has to come back to rezon the property? No, ma'am.
Commissioner, I've worked in this county for 20 years, and I actually know quite a few people in this room. I have done everything I've ever said I was going to do. I don't, the problem, the problem we have is we've got to get the curb cut, and we've got to get the driveway in. Again, Ms. Madae is under huge time constraints, and so am I, obviously. I used to work at John Wheeler, and one of the big things we did there was do what you say, say what you do, and do what you say. Always do the right thing. I can promise you, I've worked with quite a few of these people in this room, and I've never done, I've never not done what I said I was going to do. I think the homeowners would tell you that I, as soon as I knew their concern about the pond, which, when I went in there, I, no offense, but I felt like I was walking into a hornet's nest. Actually, I did walk into a hornet's nest, and I had no idea. Commissioner Stamey was the only one that knew what I was getting myself into.
He didn't tell you in advance, did he?
No, ma'am. Well, he did try, I guess he did try and warn me, but I think he laughed a little bit. He did have to stand up and protect me a couple of times, as the purses and bricks were flying at me. I had no idea what I was getting myself into. But when I found out their concerns about the pond, as quickly as I possibly could get permission to brush cat around the pond and get it cleaned up, they will all tell you, it happened, it was probably within a week. I've done everything I said I would ever do. I don't intend upon backing down on something I've given you my word on. I have full authority from the landowners to do whatever it is I need to do to make this happen. I can promise you, and I'll sit down and fill it out this minute and write you a check this minute, if that makes you feel any better, whatever you want me to do. Unfortunately, trying to get the plats redrawn and everything else the way they need to do takes, I can't have, make that happen in a day. You'd think I could with all the other stuff I've been able to accomplish in the past months, but it's been a tough, tough, tough process. Commissioner Stamey can tell you, I've spent hours and hours on the phone with him trying to work this all out, and I don't know what else I can do. I mean, I'm, seriously, I'm, my back's against the wall now, and if I don't get an approval for a driveway, Dr. Madae's going to be screaming at me, and she's going to be a lot worse than them. So it's kind of, it's kind of a lose-lose for me if I don't get the driveway cut. I'm not going to make them happy because the pond's going to go to a mess again, because she's no longer going to be able to take the practice, most possibly, because she has to move somewhere to get her practice open back up. She's actually sharing space with another doctor right now that I probably would like to have her out and have her on her own, because she does have a huge client base, and she can't even see all of her clients. So it's, it's a problem for me every way I turn. I never would have dreamed in a million years when I was given the package that I would have this much problem, never. Commissioner Stamey made the comment that I could have done a Walmart with less problems. It's, it's been tough. It's been very tough.
I just wanted to make sure from a procedural standpoint that everything is done legally and within the confines of our ordinances, because that's a protection, not only for our citizens, but for you as well, as you develop your property.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. And I have no problem with the time, the time on it, as long as I have the driveway curb cut. It doesn't matter to me if it takes 60 days. I'm happy to do whatever I need to do to make it sure it all goes through and there's no problems and no glitches. I think Commissioner Stamey, I've worked with Commissioner Bowman a few times, and I've never really had any issues. I always, again, I've always done what I said I was going to do. I've worked with Sherri now for the last few months, and she's become my new best friend. I think she would tell you that I'm going to do what I say I'm going to do. I work with her husband, Willie, and, in the field, and, again, great people. I think if you asked anybody in the county, they would not have any issues with me or anything I've ever done. And, again, I've always done everything I said I was going to do. So, again, I'm asking, I'm actually begging now. I'm no longer asking.
Does any board member have a question or comment for the staff or for, for our applicant?
Madam Chair, I have a couple comments before we even make a motion. Jerry has done exactly what I've asked him to do, especially the last week and a half. We've communicated many times today. I've told him some documentation that I need that he's produced for me tonight. Mr. Bowman was kind enough to walk the property with us today, met the doctor Carrie, it was good, and had a great communication with Shirley and the entire neighborhood over there. I'm trying my best to take care of those people, and Shirley, the modification of the, of the additional square footage, of the additional buffer is not in this tonight, but probably we could address that on the other. But I'm very comfortable. He's on TV, he's on record, and for night, we were fortunate enough to have a room full of people, so when you made that comment, so I got plenty of witnesses that you said what you were saying. So I think I'm comfortable enough to move forward.
Would you like to make the motion?
A couple questions I have. Jerry, I had someone ask me earlier today from staff, Michael had a question concerning the driveway. We are paving that driveway off, off the Heritage Way, correct?
County code requires it to be a dust-free driveway, so it will have to be concrete or asphalt, yes.
Okay, we heard that comment. Ms. Wiley, you were the one who gave me the information to tell me that I could have did the 15 days, which I transpired to him this morning. So I apologize for, me, that was me that transpired to you. I said, I think we can do this in 15 days. Because when we talked last night, you were not in the understanding that we could do it in 15 days, correct?
The advertising has to be done within 15 days before the hearing can be held. You have to have 15 days previous, prior advertisement before you can actually have the hearing, so maybe there was, I'm not sure if I was.
Well, I was not in the understanding that we could bypass. Well, I was understanding that we could bypass P and Z, but we cannot bypass P and Z, correct, Sherry?
That is correct.
The Georgia law, Ms. Matthews and I talked about that this morning. The county can initiate zoning actions. The Board of Commissioners can initiate zoning changes. But I think our ULDC, according to Sherry, requires applicants to file those, and so we talked about that this morning, and she told me that the applicant didn't come in to file an application. Regardless of who initiates it, you still have to comply with the zoning procedures law, which requires fifteen days advance advertising before you have a hearing. So whether it comes back before y'all, or whether it goes before the CAB, you still have to do the advertising. And that's what we got, I guess, confused, Commissioner, on the fifteen-day requirement. That's the only fifteen-day requirement we have.
And I'm fine with that, Commissioner. You know, again, it doesn't matter to me how long it takes. I mean, obviously, we want to get it done as quickly as possible to make sure everybody's happy, and so we can make sure we're doing what we say we're going to do. Fifteen days is not really a big issue for me, if it's not an issue for you guys, but I will still get my stuff turned in this week, no later than Friday. I will have everything turned in to the county. Again, I've already done my pre-application meeting this morning with them. I've already got my notes of what they need. I have every bit of that. So I have no issue with the time constraint on it, other than the fact that I need my driveway cut. Again, I think that I've made most of these people happy. I think they're happy to see some progress over there. I think they're happy not to have snakes running around out there. I don't think that any of them provided everything I've said tonight. They really have no reason to trust me because they don't know me. The only thing that I can say is that they did give me a lot of their concerns. I did go out immediately and address their concerns, and spent a bunch of money doing it also. But I do intend upon getting everything cleaned up over there and making something happen, and making it look really, really nice. If it doesn't look really, really nice, then I'm going to have them mad at me, Dr. Maude mad at me, Corlor mad at me. I mean, it's a no-win situation for me if it doesn't look great. It's one of them, we're done.
Do you have anything from the Georgia Department of Transportation concerning the inability to access the property from Jonesboro Road? Was that just a verbal representation?
There is nothing from GDOT currently that says I can't have the driveway. The issue right now is the driveway, the current driveway, I can show you, comes in, the current driveway comes in here, right on the property line. The problem is, is the pond is right here next to the driveway. I have to have twenty-four feet there to come in. The problem is, is when I try and widen the driveway, it goes over into the floodplain area. When it goes into the floodplain area, then I'm illegal. So I can't move. So it's not a GDOT issue. It's actually a Henry County issue. It's actually a flood mitigation issue now.
And that raises another issue, Madam Chairman, because if its only practical access to that property is Heritage Way, then, you know, we can't landlocked the property.
Ms. Wiley, I actually spoke to my attorney, and they told me that. I do not have to downgrade my zoning in order to do this. So it's really not a matter, it becomes more of a legal issue at that point, but I don't think any of us want to be legal about it. None of us want to go to court about it. None of us want to, we just want to get along, and we want to be good neighbors, and we're willing to reduce our zoning. So we did speak to our attorneys, and our attorneys did let us know that we did not have to drop anything if we can't get the driveway in, because the county cannot deny us access. I didn't bring that up. She did, and I didn't bring it up because, to me, it was a mute point. It didn't matter. It didn't matter to me, because we were going to do the right thing by the county and by the citizens of the county.
Anything further, Mr. Stamey?
One last question, Jerry. You're talking about the entire five-point, five-point-seven-eight-seven acres of land going back, reverting back, or going back to an O-N-I?
Back to O-N-I.
Okay. Y'all heard that, and everybody, just want to make sure. With that, I'd like to make the recommendation to approve the curb cut on Heritage Way for the modification.
Madam Chair, can I make a couple of comments? Certainly.
The current use of that property with the driveway that's there will work fine. If there's additional properties added in the future, we may want to reserve the right to make comment on any improvements that might need to be made to the road. But as it is today, we are happy with Heritage Way. I don't know if that will come, should come, if there's a rezoning to O-N-I, but if there's additional properties added with the one access point, you know, we would like to see one access point remain, but I have no issue with it as it is today with the use. The doctor's office now, to us, doesn't generate any improvements to the existing roadway.
The, I did, Mr. Mickel was kind enough to meet myself and Sherry and David Simmons out there to help us try and figure some of the stuff out. The current size of the building is approximately 5,000 square feet. It will have about twenty-five right-hand turns in, left-hand turns out of the Heritage Way area. According to David Simmons, he has said that with the amount of traffic and volume that we'll have there, the road should be fine. It shouldn't be any issues at all. If we increase or build another building on the property, then that access may not be well enough. We have no intentions, we have not talked about, we're not planning on, we're not planning on doing absolutely anything else with the property. Dr. Maude actually has the property leased for the next five years, and there's no plans to renovate or build or construct any new building on there. It's never been talked about, nothing. But if that does happen, then we understand that there could be some modifications that had to be made to the road if we got, according to David Simmons, if we got above 10,000 square feet and had a couple hundred cars coming in and out every day. So we are aware of that, and you have that on record. It's on TV.
And Chairman Matthews, just to echo what Sherry mentioned, that certainly will be addressed in the event that any new buildings go on that property. They would be required to submit a full set of development plans, and at that time, DOT will certainly have to review the plans and make any recommendations to the applicant who's developing the property at that time. So that is something that we can certainly make sure that if we notice that the traffic volume is going up, we will address.
Thank you.
You know, with the floodplain out in the front, it's cost prohibitive to go in there and tear that house down. You don't have enough room to build a whole lot on there. I think we're talking about a mute point unless you tear that house down and come back and build something else on where it sits. You don't have enough room to move back into the back. I mean, sir, I think that's kind of a mute point anyway.
And the board can certainly, because this modification is in regards to access, if Commissioner Stamey would like to modify the way that the condition is currently read, we could certainly add some language that if any additional buildings are added to the property, the access drive onto Heritage Way shall be reevaluated, and should a traffic study be warranted, that should be done at the, on the cost of the applicant and/or developer.
That would actually, I think, be covered when we did the building permit. If we were to try and obtain a building permit, when we go to get the land development permit, when we get our LDP, that would actually be covered, I think, at that time. And that's typical of the way it works, and we could not get an LDP or, we could not get a building permit until we pass our LDP. If at that time they required us to do core samples or whatever it is that we needed to do, they would require us to do it then before we could actually get our building permit.
We have a motion on the floor for approval of the applicant's request for modification to the zoning condition, and I need a second on that. Second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor?
Just one second. Do I need to add the verbiage to?
I would like to see...
Yeah, I would like to add, I'd like to modify my motion to include verbiage, as Sherry said. Madam Court, if you could, for the record.
Okay, we have an amended motion. Amended second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to move on to administration. The first item is a resolution requesting approval of a lease agreement for property to be used as a police precinct in the Ellenwood Fairview area. Our presenter is Butch Sanders, County Manager. That's handout number one.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board. I have two items this evening to come before you, both pertaining to the north end of the county, Commissioner Holmes' district, and more specifically to the Ellenwood Fairview community. The first is a resolution for your consideration to lease precinct, police precinct space in Fairview to increase police presence and visibility and hence deter crime. Commissioner Holmes has advocated for a more visible and centralized police presence in Ellenwood and Fairview since taking office. We have, myself and other staff members, have looked at several potential spaces, negotiated prices, and we have come down on the preferred space being in the Old Public Shopping Center, which is the shops of Ellenwood. It's in the heart of the business district, very competitively priced at nine dollars a foot and preferred by the commissioner. I would recommend approval of this one-year lease with the operating cost and the lease to be paid for out of seized funds.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Holmes?
I see a number of members of District Five in the audience. Can you define the difference between seized funds and the general budget?
Seized funds does not affect the general fund. Those were dollars coming into the county through various police investigation and enforcement activities.
And also, can you explain to them some of the other areas in which these funds have been applied in the past?
We have purchased facilities for other law enforcement activities, such as vehicles, equipment for vehicles, special equipment for specific law enforcement activities, other facilities for different divisions within the department.
I just want to read a couple of crime statistics from February in the Fairview area, because it pretty much will explain why there is a stronger need for increased presence and also increased visibility in the Fairview community. Armed robberies were up sixty percent in the Fairview business community. Burglary commercial was up 217 percent. Rape was up 75 percent. So there is a very strong need for this precinct in our community. So I'm going to ask the commissioners for their support in approving seized funds for the Fairview precinct.
See, does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
The only question I have, Madam Chair, is the twelve-six at nine dollars a square foot, fourteen hundred square feet, I understand that, but then when it comes down further, it says eight hundred dollars a month. What's, I don't understand.
For operating expenses.
Okay, so we're talking about the twelve-six is the actual lease, and then eight hundred a month for the operating expenses.
Yes, sir.
In addition to this, so it's an additional ninety-six hundred a year.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Bowman?
Couple. One thing is, about four and a half years ago, we tried to put, or we did put a precinct at Fairview, and we got a fair amount of, you know, exposure there, but bringing the exposure and putting it right there in the middle of that business district can only enhance the, our police presence in that area. We, you know, I'll be honest, I ran on it four and a half years ago, because living in Stockbridge area and knowing everything seems to be coming south from DeKalb and from Clayton and some of the others, I know in dealing with our police department and with our CID and our others, we've literally caught burglaries going on in process, and when we found out that the people that were actually doing the burglaries lived in Clayton County or in DeKalb County, basically running across the line, doing the crime, and getting back home. And so, you know, I mean, I support this, but I support it because it's good to have it. Now, in Stockbridge, you know, our new precinct's coming in online in Stockbridge, and we'll have a lot more police presence going out from that one. But also, a little bit further north, that's a hotbed of activity, and I do support it. I did not understand at first. I thought we were going to be able to pay for the whole thing out of seized funds, but I still believe that it's money well-spent to get police presence up in that area.
And I would like to note that I am requesting for the operating expenses also out of seized funds.
Or the lease, or the operating expenses?
Both.
Oh, okay. I mean, that'd be great if we can get the lease out of seized funds. That'd be, that would be tremendous. But I mean, I support it if, in fact, we could, just from the standpoint of, we don't get that much that I know of from our police department coming up from Spaulding or Butts and doing the south end of our county, you know, and give, I know we have problems there, but I don't see as much there as I do from the north end coming down, hitting us and then going back into the north end. So that was, that's all I have, Madam Chair. I just wanted to bring that point up.
Any other comments? If not, Mr. Holmes, we have a resolution before you, and I'll look for a motion from you.
Madam Chair, I've moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of an agreement with Developers Diversified Realty for the District Five Safety and Prevention Night, and that's handout number two.
Madam Chair, this is also an item specifically pertaining to the Fairview Ellenwood community, and it also is, actually, it's the exact same property, except the public gathering space out front of the development. This is a request to, that we enter into an agreement with Developers Diversified Realty, the property owner, for a District Five Safety and Prevention Night. Once again, Commissioner Holmes has been a tireless advocate for greater police presence, greater police visibility, and this is a program, an event, which would be a week from this evening, which speaks directly to that. I think you get people from the community directly involved, give them an opportunity to come out and meet their police department, meet their public safety folks, and we have had several conversations and negotiations with Developers Diversified. I want to thank Ms. Wiley for her work, Mr. Wellman for his work on this issue, and we ended up with a, with an agreement which basically provides the same liability agreement and certificate of insurance that we provide Henry Town Center for the larger night-out event coming up later in the year.
I also, I want to say, I want to give a special thank you to Sheriff and Chief Mills. They have worked tirelessly on the Safety and Protection Night, and without them, none of this would be possible. So I want to say thank you, Keith, and thank you, Chief.
Does any board member have a question? Mr. Bowman?
Well, I hate to speak back in it again, but I think that this would be, well, I think we should think about it for just a minute. I have no issue with calling it District Five Prevention Night, but I mean, District Four is right up in the middle of it. District Two is right up there and ties in the District Five right there, you know, right up at, oh heck, 138 and 75. I think it would behoove us if we, I'm not trying to get any, listen, you don't even have to put District Four, but I think it would be good if it was, you know, you could call it the north end of the county, you could call it whatever, but I would like to see, I'd like to see Mr. Letta, Commissioner Letta and myself involved in that, because we directly touch those districts, and we're involved. I mean, Stockbridge, Stockbridge, the two precincts I have in Stockbridge, we're right on the line, you know. I mean, if you look at Flat Rock Road, on the right-hand side is District Five, and on the left-hand side is District Four.
Yes, sir.
We're all involved in that initiative, and I would like to see, you know, I'd like to see it, you know, if it's going to be advertising, that sort of thing, so we can get the people in those areas to attend that.
I mean, that actually sounds wonderful. I would like to see all the commissioners involved, as well as everybody from the county. This event is not just for District Five, it's for Henry County as a whole. So everybody is welcome. We will have the opportunity for people to come out, people that have, you know, that are involved in organizations as well, as well as people that have businesses, to come out and show their wares and advertise their, advertise their goods. So I don't have a problem with changing the name to something else. We can just call it Safety and Protection Night, and everybody is, everybody's welcome to come.
The point was to try and get more, more participation from the group that's right in there. And like I said, Fred's right in there, and man, I'm all, you know, everywhere you don't touch, I touch. I mean, so we're just following the line there, and I think it'd be beneficial. I think that to bring that out and have an opportunity for, you know, if we put a district on it, it's almost like saying, this is for District Five. I'd like for, you know, something to say, this is for, well, it could just say for Henry County. I mean, but it's, you know, it's an appreciation thing that...
More Henry Safety and Prevention Night?
Yes, sir. I'd be fine with that. I just, I get a little, you know, I think that there might be something that wouldn't go because they thought it was just for District Five, and I don't want to put that on it. If we're going to have all of our people up there, I think we all should do our best to try and be there.
Let's just give it a generic name.
Let's just give it a generic name, Safety and Protection Night. I think that would satisfy all in the county, and everybody will be welcome.
And I just want to say that both these items play, go hand in hand with the crime prevention efforts of the Sheriff and Chief Nichols. I think that when you, when you are visible, you do have more of a presence, and you involve the public, you're going to be much more successful. And you're exactly right to thank them for their efforts.
Any other comments? Mr. Dean?
This is actually in the parking lot where the new precinct would be, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. At what time would we be occupying the new center?
We will have our prison crew painting tomorrow, so we'll push it as, as fast as we can.
So there may be an opportunity for the citizens to look at the precinct?
Possibly.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, Mr. Holmes, this lies in your district, and I will look for a motion in regards to this liability certificate.
Madam Chair, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Alata. All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the next item, we have requests for authorization to adopt a revised ethics ordinance. Our presenters are the Ethics Committee, and that's exhibit number 11.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Committee everyone, I was supporting my committee, the committee members are here tonight. As you know, last month, the committee presented a lengthy presentation concerning a revised ethics ordinance, and at the conclusion of that presentation and discussion and input from the public, there was a vote from this board suggesting that we wait for 30 days, receive input from interested citizens, and bring this back to you all for action. So we're here tonight under those time constraints to do that. And since that time, we made, we have made changes suggested by the board, the suggested changes on defining what an immediate family member is. And we've also received indirectly, I have anyway, the committee and I have received some input from members of 3D C concerning some of the proposed revisions that are in this ethics ordinance. And I just want to take a quick moment, without being lengthy tonight, to address some of the concerns that I saw and some emails that I received concerning this matter. In the first, I just wanted to highlight my bullet points. One of the concerns that has been raised is the selection of the hearing officer. The proposed ordinance provides that once a complaint has been filed, the complaint, and is properly filed, the complaint will ultimately be forwarded to the county attorney's office, who shall then assign the matter to a hearing officer. And as I understand, some 3D C members have expressed concern about this process, this referral process in particular. And I wanted to flesh out what the hearing officer, the scope of the role of the hearing officer, will be a person who is sufficiently suited to handle the matter alleged in the complaint, and a person who is experienced in handling contested matters, reviewing and gathering facts, interviewing witnesses, and weighing evidence. So in all likelihood, the hearing officer will be a licensed attorney, who could also be a certified mediator or arbitrator, or even a retired or senior judge. And in addition, in order to alleviate concerns or implications that the county attorney's office would somehow conspire with a hearing officer to have a fixed outcome, I wanted it to be clear that aside from assisting with procedural issues such as ensuring the presence of county witnesses or facilitating meeting space if requested, the county attorney's office will have no role in the substantive investigative process. So whether, you know, the county attorneys, myself, or someone else, the county attorney's office under this particular proposed ordinance will have no role in the substantive investigative process. And as a further check on the process for referring to a hearing officer, it's important to note that the hearing officer's findings will become a matter of public record. The Board of Commissioners will have to take public action on those findings, and the deliberative process on those findings will be a matter of public record and open, open and transparent to the public. So those are some checks that are built into the referral process. And I want to state that the committee, we recommended this hearing, this process ultimately because we felt that the voting public would be the ultimate Board of Ethics. Obviously, the 3D C proposal proposed a Board of Ethics comprised of people who were appointed by political parties, or I think they have since suggested that, you know, they still will want to have a panel or a separate Board of Ethics, but we believe that the hearing officer process will be not only more of a cost savings, but will be more in line with what is needed in order to give the public a clear view of what is going on, and it brings accountability back to this board because you will ultimately be called upon to make findings and take a vote on whether or not a violation of the ordinance has occurred. Another, another point of concern that has been raised is the exclusion of county employees from the proposed ethics ordinance. Again, we felt, the committee felt, that the personnel manual, which is a comprehensive policy that has been in place for decades, is sufficient to address employee malfeasance and employee misconduct. We also were very concerned about some of the provisions regarding employee disclosures. It is a violation of Georgia law to reveal the home addresses of public employees, and so that just certainly could not ever be a part of any public ordinance. And there's a public safety component to that prohibition. And I gave an example, if you want to, if you have police officers, district attorneys, people who are regularly prosecuting criminal activities, it would be, it would be derelict for us to put those addresses out for public purview, as well as the addresses of their family members and anyone else that they may be related to who may live in Henry County. Ultimately, the personnel policy is an ordinance. It provides a hearing process. If an employee is terminated or suspended, they have the right to a hearing, to have personnel hearings. Those hearings are presided over by the county manager. Employees can have witnesses, provide documentary evidence, and the county manager has to provide a written decision. That decision is appealable to the Board of Commissioners, and the Board of Commissioners' decision to uphold or deny the county manager's decision is appealable to the Superior Court, and from there, the decision can be taken to the Georgia Court of Appeals and the Georgia Supreme Court. So the committee in weighing and reviewing whether or not county employees should be within the scope of this ordinance, we felt that there is an adequate process already in place to deal with employee malfeasance, and a separate duplicate process is both unnecessary and a waste of public resources. And so I wanted to make those few points on those two very important issues that have been raised, and I welcome the opportunity to hear the input from any other folks who are here tonight.
See, board member have a question or a comment for the county attorney? Miss, all right. I know in the last meeting, we had a pretty lengthy presentation, and I didn't really think it was to anyone's advantage to endure an hour-long presentation again, being mindful of everyone's time, but it was very thorough, very well thought out, very well researched, very well put together. And again, I have to commend the, the committee that worked many, many hours to review all the information and come up with what is a very comprehensive ordinance that pulled from a lot of different sources. Henry County has not been operating in the absence of ethics ordinances. We have the state laws that have been in place, we have the Commissioner's Code of Conduct, we have the personnel policy. But in an effort to bring all these together in one document, I know our staff worked very, very hard in order to do that. This is not really a public hearing. We're not required to open this up as a public hearing, but I feel like it's important that we do that at this time. And so in order to accommodate some, some public comment, I'm going to open it up for a period of time, and I'm going to limit that time because we could spend the remainder of the evening talking about this if there were not some limitations placed on that. So what I'm going to do, for those who are in favor of the ethics ordinance and putting that in place, or pretty much for the most part supports what's been presented, I'm going to allocate 10 minutes. Within that 10 minutes, you can have one or more speakers, but each speaker will be limited to no more than five minutes so that others may have an opportunity to speak. So at this time, if you're here and you wish to speak, for the most part in favor of what's been presented, maybe with a few little tweaks, I'll ask you to come to the microphone. You can state your name and address for the record, and each individual will be limited to five minutes with a maximum of 10 minutes if you come at this time. Good evening.
Evening. Thank you, Board. Mike Eddy, 520 Hilli Court, McDonough, Georgia. Here certainly, as about a year ago, we met in preparation for and to give to this board proposal from 3D C. So tonight, my comments are looping in along with what the county attorney mentioned along with 3D C, and we do have some generalized comments after having read the document, just some questions that have arisen from it. Certainly appreciate that the Board of Commissioners are moving forward with the unified Code of Ethics. Just a couple of comments, and I'll try to be as quickly as, get through as possible in terms of, first of all, what the county manager had mentioned, or the county attorney, excuse me, got the hearing officer. Appreciate the fact that they put defining lines in the definitions of what a hearing officer could be. The question we have that came up the last meeting was that the scope of a board would be too political. Well, in government, that's hard to believe that we'd ever have a board that's political. But the proposal at the time was to put together, at least the best way we could, a group of citizens involved, much, much in line with what the Elections Board is. But with that being said, Fulton County, and Gwinnett County was mentioned also by the committee as one of the counties that use for Carl Vincent. And with, even with Fulton and Gwinnett, the process, like in Fulton, they do have a seven-member board, one selected by the Board of Commissioners, the other six are selected by various and sundry groups everywhere, from Chamber Commerce for both the North and various other agencies. But the scope of having one person serve on that board, there's caution about that. What I understand with that process, again, having read the document, as the county attorney, there'd be one person named that would serve as a hearing officer. Certainly, you would want to have more than one person constitute a board, and perhaps it should be three. We throw around an idea of just trying to keep people involved, could be N W A C P, could be Rotary, could be anything. But the fact is, it'd be three people involved with that process. There is, and perhaps they can straighten it out for me at least tonight or later on. In terms of what actually the role of the Board of Commissioners, what I see in this process here is that after the, the hearing officers kind of, I guess, found sufficient evidence that there may have been an issue of malfeasance or a fiduciary responsibility that was lapsed, it would come back to a board. Problem with that one is that the same board could be taking action against themselves or one of, one of the members, is just a, just a point to bring out. Immediate family members under the, what we have selected right now, that rule did change. And my thought on that was that certainly you can, you can think what you want about having in-laws, and the fact is, they are family members. And that provision in itself, I think, really should stay in there because, again, you're married by, you're by marriage, by law, and that provision for in-laws should stay in there. Things regarding the, under the conflict of interest, certainly a number of things, and one of the sections here, and it just may be a typo in the process of how the numbers align under Section Five, but I do want to mention in here about the rule of necessity and recusal, that if you do have the, the basic number of people appear to form an actual meeting, having, having members of the Board of Commissioners up there, what happens in the fact of a recusal if, in fact, you have the correct number, but then one of them has to recuse themselves, and then what happens that deals with the issue of rule of necessity? The other thing is, the provision that was originally brought forward dealt with elected officials, and in probably a little bit greater length, we talk about the separation from being a commissioner or elected official in this case, that it should have, you should have at least two years' period of time with the county before you can come back forward to either be employed by the county and/or have contractual work as one, the original provisions we put in with U C E that did not occur in this second version of it. I think there's a couple of things, Section 9 are penalties, there's particularly no fines addressed, or that's not well-defined in itself, but there's, and I could run short of time here, there's a number of things that still are questions out here that I know that the county attorney mentioned and started addressing, just a few of those, but we certainly have a lot more questions than I have time to bring to you right now, at least with the version that we saw.
Anyone else who wishes to speak? We have five minutes. Okay? At this time, for those who maybe are not fully in favor of the ethics ordinance, if you would, come forward. I know there's some elements that some people are for and some are against, and it's kind of hard to figure it out, but anyway, good evening. If you would state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Yes, ma'am. I am James Risher, and I live at 155 Alley Drive, McDonough. I also attended a meeting, I think it was last July, on the, on the proposed ethics ordinance that was prepared by the Citizens Committee, and I think that, you know, that their efforts are commendable. However, the, you know, the main problem that I saw with it, and also with some of the recommendations that have been made tonight, is that the, it overreaches too far and does not have a clear separation between the, the role of the county administration and the Board of Commissioners in regulating the behavior and ethics of county employees versus a board that would, that would attempt to do that. And I think that the staff should be commended for, for very, you know, clearly stating that in this, in this proposed ordinance that's for consideration tonight. Section Four of the proposed ordinance, as I, as I see, clearly defines what types of behaviors is not considered as ethical by elected officials and employees. Of course, by, by employees, it's, I think it's limited properly to those employees that are, that are appointed by the Board of Commissioners primarily. It also clearly states, I believe, the basis for disclosure from, from voting that is in conflicts of interest by Board of Commissioners members. And it even goes so far as to, as to, as to requiring Commissioners to recuse themselves if there's an appearance, even an appearance of conflicts of interest, even when there is factual evidence that, that there is an absence of such conflicts. I think Section Six concerning contracts is very good. Again, it's reflective of the state purchasing law that has some ethical considerations in that. I believe that, and I think that you're going to hear, hear some more information about your budget tonight, but I don't believe that the county can undertake, you know, paying another board to do this type of work at this time, especially in times when you're looking to cut back expenses and to streamline government. Again, I think that this proposed ordinance clearly differentiates and divides the elected officials and employees that are covered by this, by this proposed ethics. officials and employees that are covered by this, by this proposed ethics ordinance, and those, which is the vast majority of employees, that are covered by the Personnel Code of Henry County and the, and the procedures set forth. I think that the, that the, the problem I saw with the earlier proposal is it overreached too far and, and, and made the situation very blurry. We, years ago, the county experimented with a, with having a personnel board that, that would, you know, hear employee grievances and disciplinary matters, and frankly, we found out that it, it simply, it did not work out very well. So, I think that the county manager system, being the, that the county manager is also the Personnel Director of the county, and there's adequate provision for appeals from, from disciplinary decisions by department heads and the manager to the Board of Commissioners is sufficient to cover the vast majority of, of the employees. I thank you from the, for the opportunity to speak on this. I hope that you will support the, the work that your Staff Committee has, has done on it. I do speak with some experience in these matters. I've had over twenty-five years of, of planning and management at the county and city levels here in Henry County alone, plus at some other jurisdictions, and I feel very confident that the county would be well-served by, by adopting this, this ordinance, particularly since the, the qualifications for the hearing officer have been much better defined as presented tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? All right. If not, Board, you have a resolution before you, an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of Henry County, Georgia, to provide a new code section regarding ethics, to provide for penalties, to provide for codification, to provide for severability, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to provide an effective date, and for other purposes. You have that before you, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Holder. Is there any further discussion on this item? All right, all in favor? Ms. Roletta?
I was wondering if I could make, make a comment about what three DCC said about in-laws, if I could?
Sure.
This subject's been, we discussed it quite a bit in three and three sessions, going over this, committee and everything else. But I, I haven't lived in this county, but fourteen years, I guess. And when it came up, I thought, I don't, it really doesn't affect me. And as I was sitting in one of my three and three meetings, one of them said something about, well, your wife's lived here for forty years, and you inherited a bunch of in-laws, which I did, and I don't know those in-laws, except when I end up going to a funeral or a wedding, and I can guarantee I don't know all the in-laws that I'm now associated with who have lived generations in this county. And to put into the ethics that I'm going to be bound to recuse, recuse myself, because I have to do a lot of research to see which person in my in-law lineage might be affected by it, is a lot of work, and I think it might put all of us, and as I said, living here fourteen years, married to somebody that's lived here that time, going to put me in a position of doing a lot of homework to figure out all those people, who they may be. So, I just wanted to pass that comment on.
Mr. Holder.
I'd just like to make this comment in, in reference to what Mr. Risher said. I was sitting on the Board of Commissioners when we had the previous committee, and one of the reasons it was abandoned was the fact that each Commissioner had an appointee to the committee, made up of citizens, much of which you've proposed. But what happened was, from the legal side, that common, everyday individual that we were saying is fair, is no doubt fair, but they asked many of the wrong questions, and it became a legal issue, and we were about to be sued many times over the fact that wrong questions were asked, and it was not legal to seek certain information. So, that is one of the reasons that the previous board was abandoned. And I, and I want to applaud the committee for coming back with having it as an attorney or someone who is versed in, is versed in legal affairs and knows what questions to ask and how to ask them without being sued. And if the normal, everyday citizen such as myself, who's not an attorney, were to ask some of these questions, there could be legal ramifications, and I see one over there shaking their head, and that, am I correct in that? Ms. Bailey was here at the time also. So, those are things that we have tried, and it has not worked. So, that's all I have to say.
Any further comments on this issue? If not, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor? All opposed? A motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to finance, this is a public hearing on the proposed 2011-2012 budget for Henry County Government. Our presenters, Butch Sanders, County Manager, and Mike Bush, Finance Director.
Madam Chair and Board, I'm only up here for a second. I'm probably in the way, as Mike is chomping at the bit, but I did want to make a couple of comments, and to thank, publicly thank, Mr. Bush and his staff for the tireless efforts in putting together a very difficult budget, as well as our department heads and, and their staffs in working with us to come up with a balanced budget that does not dip into fund balance and does not call for any millage increase, and it maintains the four current furlough days in next year's budget for our employees. You'll see that the budget is about five and a half million dollars less than last year. Most of that, of course, comes from the reduction in the tax digest in our tax revenues. And I, I think that Mike has a very succinct presentation that hits the high points, and I will turn it over to him and let him conduct the public hearing.
I'm going to go through this as quick, as quickly as I can, and then if you have any questions, stop me or wait till the end, it doesn't matter. We've had two other board meetings like this with everybody involved, and this is the third time we've met on this particular budget. So, I'm going to go through the summary detail, not the, the detailed detail that we've done in the past. The first and major fund that we have is the, and I'm also going to forget to do this, remind me if you see me forgetting to do this, is our general fund, and these are our sources of funds. Property taxes are going to make up fifty-nine million, eight hundred thousand, nine hundred fifty-three dollars, or fifty-three percent of our revenues for this year. I went back and looked at 2009, it was fifty-three percent. 2010, it was fifty-five percent. In 2011, it was fifty-four percent. So, we are still around that same area. The difference is, in 2009, there was seventy-one million dollars for the property taxes. So, as the property taxes have gone down, so have our expenses. So, property taxes make up, like I say, fifty-nine million. Sales and use taxes are twenty-seven million, five hundred thousand. That's your local option sales tax, your television franchise fees, things like that. License and permit, a million, three hundred and fifty thousand, intergovernmental, that's our grants, one million, six hundred and forty-two thousand. Charges for services, fourteen million, two fifty-two. Fines and forfeitures, four million, five sixty-six. Miscellaneous revenue, one million, two thirty-four, and other sources, two million, one hundred thousand. For a total revenue budget, revenues in the general fund budget of a hundred and twelve million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars. There is a chart that we're putting up right now that kind of shows the breakdown of those revenues. Fifty-three percent, again, is the, roughly, the fifty-two point eight or whatever is the property taxes. The big twenty-four percent down there is the sales and use taxes. The next one going up clockwise, the one percent in yellow that you can barely see is a, is a license and permits, then intergovernmental grants. The thirteen percent, the biggest piece around the, between ten and eleven o'clock, is charges for services, and then the last three are, again, fines and forfeitures, miscellaneous revenues, and other sources. Now, I was, I'm going to throw this up there. If, I don't know if we can do them both at the same time to kind of show the differences. That's last, this is last year's pie versus, last year's pie versus this year's pie. They're almost identical, except for the numbers are just less. So, I just wanted to show that. On the expenditure sides, or expenditure side, we've broken it down into legislative and executive, which is basically the county manager, the Board of Commissioners, finance, human resources, tax commissioner, tax services, just the, the normal operating of the county government. Budget this year is fourteen million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Unallocated costs, which are going to be our insurance payments for retirees, contingency, small equipment, training, things like that, is four hundred and forty-seven thousand. And that, you know, we do the, the education and training and the small equipment, and we divvy that out during the year, but we put it here so it's under the county manager's control to see what expenditures that we do. That's why we have to do that, that way. The next one's the ju, the judicial system, and that's all of our courts, our DA and solicitor and public defenders, thirteen million, nine seventy-six, six ninety-one. Public safety, which makes up fifty-two percent of our total expenditures in our budget, that's fire, police, code enforcement, animal control, jail, sheriff. Public works, that is our DOT, and that's make, that's seven million, six thirty-five, nine eighty, which is six point seven percent of the budget. The health and welfare is five thousand, twenty-six dollars, is the senior services, transit, connecting Henry, family and children's services, health and welfare. The next one, and that's five million, twenty-six thousand, or four point four percent of the budget. Culture and recreation is the library and our recreation department. The housing and development, which is two million, one ninety-six, four thirty-four, that is our building department, planning and zoning, environmental department, and others in that same area. And other sources down there is five million, one ninety-six, one oh seven. This is our debt service and other issues that we have. Again, this is our chart for this year, and you compare it to the chart from last year. Put them, see if you can put them side by side, take the cover, cover of the words like They're almost identical. Again, this is a, the difference is, one of them is a hundred and seventeen million dollar budget, and the one we're in today is a hundred and twelve, but we've tried to, to maintain uniformity the best we can. Our next fund, that's our general fund, that's the revenues and expenditures of a hundred and twelve million. The next sets of funds that we're going to go over are special revenue funds. This is where the revenue coming in is for a specific purpose, and the first one of those is our law library fund. This is for, I believe this is where citizens can go in and, and research law, law issues that they may have at the courthouse. This is a fee on fines that are on, on, on different court cases, and this, this is to actually update and keep our laws, any kind of changes in the law, this is those weekly updates and changes that come through. And it has a budget of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars this year. Last year, we've amended this year's budget for a hundred and eleven, a hundred and seventy-one thousand, and going into next year's a hundred and twenty. So, fines are not as prevalent as they were, and even in this year that we're currently in. Our next one is our NSP program. This is NSP One. And it, we have four million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars in, in our budget for revenues, and the same for expenses. This is one of those funds, when we buy a house and we, it costs money, we turn around and sell the house, and we recoup that money. So, this is one of those that's going to just generate over and over and over and over. The next fund is the NSP Three program. We were just awarded the NSP Three program just a few months ago, and we had, that's why you see zeros on the previous year. We estimate to spend about one point seven million dollars a year on this fund. Our next fund is the E nine one one special fund. Our current budget is four million, two hundred and five, and we've reduced that budget this year to four million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and four, and this fund does maintain its own, its own revenues and expenditures. Law library, I mean, law enforcement grant fund, this is a new one that we had last year. The grant world is getting very difficult. I think we had somebody come up here the other day and tell us that exact same thing, and one of the things they've started making us do is separate all grant funds from regular funds so that they can exactly see what these funds were spent for. That's why we created this fund, and we've made amendments to this fund in this year amount of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars. We're adopting a budget of sixty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars, and that's because that's the only grants we currently have that we have money left to spend after July. So, again, when the fire department or police department brings a grant back to us and we get awarded a grant, this fund will get adjusted by that number. The next one is Henry County Victim Witness Special Revenue Fund. This one holds our date money, our jail construction and staffing money, which basically, the jail construction and staffing money is used to help pay the debt service off for the current jail. Victim witness date money, that's for drug abuse and treatment education. We have, you know, some of our other departments are being funded through some of these date funds, through the courts, and they are maintaining records on that. And you have a, a resolution that says if it gets down to a million dollars, it comes back to you, and it's still at about one point four million. So, that's a, a good, healthy fund. The technology fund, this is a state court fund that, there's only, I think, two in the state of Georgia, and our, I think, Judge Stutter was able to get this in for us. This is where they tack on a fee to every fine that comes through there, and it, it goes to help offset the cost of technological, you know, new things like the TV screens and the computers on the courtrooms. They're actually able to pay for that from this fund instead of affecting general fund dollars, which it was, that was done prior to this fund coming in. The next one is the Juvenile Assistance Fund. This is where mediation, supervision fees, this is for our juvenile court, and it's a, it's a very small fund. It's at sixty-three thousand dollars budgeted last year, and this year we're at twenty-eight thousand. So, this is a very small fund used to pay for supervision fees for the people who go through the juvenile court. The next one's the Henry County Economic Development Fund. This is Bob White and his staff and the development, huh? And the Development Authority that we have here in Henry County, and their budget last year was three hundred and twenty thousand, this year it's three hundred and sixteen, revenues and expenditures. The next one is the Hotel Motel Fund, and this is one where we've increased it this year from three hundred and thirty-six to four hundred and forty-three, and the main reason for that increase is the, going from eight percent, from five percent to eight percent on the bed tax fee. And this is one of those that's paid for by people visiting Henry County versus Henry County taxpayers, and this money is broken down and between the Visitors Bureau and the Henry County Board of Commissioners, and we use that money to, you know, promote tourism, keep our streets clean, our parks clean, things like that. Henry County Impact Fees, the, the budget here is, basically, the appropriations are two point seven million dollars. That's the cost that we've already, debt service that we've already know is going to come out of there, so the revenue source of that is going to be the impact fees which come in, which are very small, and the other is going to be through fund balance and uses of stuff when we did have, you know, days when we were having building and construction in Henry County. The next one is our Stormwater Fund. This is another one that, that basically, this is an enterprise fund. The, all the other ones we just talked about were special revenue funds. This is an enterprise fund, which basically is set up to operate itself. The revenues brought in are used for expenses for the sole purpose of stormwater. Last year, we budgeted two point, two million, eight hundred and seven, thirty-seven thousand. This year, we're at two million, seven seventy-three. The next one is the capital budget. This is a capital project. In this year's budget, we have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars proposed, and this is to pay the debt service on a lease purchase we did in this year for nearly five million dollars for cars and computers and other current needs that we had, and fire, fire trucks. I think we bought six ambulances and two fire trucks out of this money, and that's to pay the debt service for one year in the capital projects fund. The next one is the debt service fund, and we've broken it down into two different groups. One is general government, Henry County government, with all different funds that are involved. Our debt for, did I turn too many pages? Oh, okay. Our debt is eight, nineteen million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand. Our debt is eight, $19,135,888. That's for our splosted bonds that we issued. The other portion of that debt is $8,128,653. That's all the other debt service that we've got in Henry County, from the general fund to E911, to date funds, or to, I'm sorry, the jail construction funds, things like that. That's where that's paid out of, out of the debt service fund. And then finally is our narcotics fund. This is a situation where state law requires that you adopt a budget for all special revenue funds, and federal law says you cannot adopt a budget for these narcotics or these drug funds that we've already talked about earlier tonight. So what we have to do is we adopt a zero budget, which basically says, I'm not adopting a budget. But then if any money is spent, it will come and get spent through this fund for this fiscal year. That's the summary of the Henry County 2011-2012 overall budgets for all funds. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Does any board member have a question or comment from what's been presented? Mr. Holder.
Mike and your staff, I want to commend you for the hard work, and of course, the work that we as commissioners have endured through the whole thing. I think that to get a true vision of the budget, if we set this number at $112,452,000, and I can understand that, and we have to cut, that's not my point at all. But one thing that was left out of the presentation was, how many positions are going to be cut? How many people's jobs are going to be lost to achieve these numbers? Do we need to cut? Will we have to cut? There's no question, we will. There's one thing that, and I'm speaking personally now, I'm not speaking, I'm speaking from my own personal standpoint and the position that I take. And that is, this budget is figured, as presented earlier, with no additional furlough days. I will have a difficult time myself, supporting a budget that is going to eliminate numbers of jobs. I don't have those numbers in front of me at this point, as to how many positions will be eliminated. But to see people's jobs totally eliminated, when on the other side, there's no, there's no additional furlough to help offset the impact of our loss of revenues. I'm speaking personally. Every commissioner has their own opinion. I have a serious problem with that, and I would encourage, within, before this budget is presented for adoption, that some of this is taken into consideration. Because like I said, I would have an extremely hard time supporting a budget that didn't show some more furlough days to help increase the revenue and to not totally eliminate positions. Because we're showing compassion for employees by not adding furlough days, but out the other side of our mouth, we're saying, okay, here are so many X number of employees that won't have a job, or that we are going to outsource jobs that will affect whole crews. So, I'm saying, we need to share in these tough times. And that's my personal opinion of that. We'll wait to see what the final result is when it's May the 28th.
31st.
31st is when we will actually have the meeting to adopt.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, if not, this is a public hearing on the proposed 2011-2012 budget, and I'd like to take a few minutes to open this up for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in reference to the proposed budget. All right, this is a non-action item today. The next hearing on this will be May 31st at 9:00 a.m. It is called meeting. We will finalize the budget for 2011-2012 at that time. At this time, I need approval of the minutes, and I'm going to take these separately because we had some commissioners who were absent. The first set of meeting minutes will be, for March 31st, and Commissioner Stamey and Mr. Holmes, neither of you were here for that set of minutes. Are there any additions or corrections that need to be made to these minutes? If not, I will entertain a motion from the other three for the approval of the minutes. Motion by Mr. Aletta, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Okay, motion carries three zero. The next set of, the next sets of minutes will be for April 19th, May the 2nd, and May the 31st. And I had several corrections to these minutes that I will give to the clerk. Are there any other additions or corrections? If not, I will entertain a motion for approval of those three sets of minutes. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Mr. County Manager, do you have anything for public comment?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
The upcoming meeting, has anyone else signed up for public comment? The upcoming meetings and events, on Friday, May the 27th, all county offices will be closed for a furlough day. And Monday, May 30th, all county offices will be closed in observance of Memorial Day. And I'm sure there will be something going on at Heritage Park, at the Veterans Wall of Honor, and I encourage everybody to check the county website for that. Monday, June the 6th, at 9:00 a.m., we have a workshop meeting. And Tuesday, June the 7th, at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular board meeting. Monday, June the 20th, at 9:00 a.m., and June 21st, at 6:30 p.m., these are both regular board meetings. If there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, the April 14th minutes. Thought we'd get them too. All right. All right, we'll do the April 14th minute, thank you. Mr. Stamey, you and Mr. Holmes were not there for that one either. I need a motion for approval of the April 14th minutes. Mr. Holder made the motion to approve, Mr. Bowman seconded, all in favor. Motion carries three zero. All right, if there's no further business to come before the board, have a motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. We stand adjourned.